All right, I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Board to order. First item will be to roll call.
Member Blue, present.
Member Ryan Clark, present.
Member Callahan, present.
Member Me, present. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any meeting. Attendees are therefore advised if such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Further notice in terms of the Planning Board general rules, the Planning Board reserves the right to administer ults by the chair, summons witness, calls for the production of papers, cross-examine any person giving testimony during the proceedings, declare recess, limit debate, inspect the subject site or building during reasonable hours, and adjourn the hearing for cause. The order of business will be announced by the chair. Any person will be directed to the chair. Any person wishing to speak, please raise your hand for recognition from the chair. When recognized, please stand, state your name and address, specific interest in the proceeding, and special credentials, if any, pertaining to the presentation. Please speak slowly and within the context of the hearing matter. Hearing is being stenographered and taped for the public record. The Planning Board reserves the right to exclude any unnecessary, irrelevant, repetitive, or harassing presentations. Cross-examination between parties and interests or other person will be permitted only after due recognition from the chair. All documents, papers, and plans introduced in the hearing should be clearly identified by the name and some other designation, and the person so introducing them shall be also identified by name and address. A Planning Board exhibit letter will be assigned to each submittal unless the submittal has been specifically identified by an exhibit letter. When excerpts from case law are cited, the complete text of findings shall be fringed to the Planning Board within 14 days. All right, I'm going to go to the business portion, but before I do, because I don't know whether anybody's here for the -- I have a request for a continuance. Dear Mr. Fatsies, as you know, our office represents Massachusetts Buddhist Society Inc. with regard to its application for site plan review of its proposed Buddhist learning center at the above address. Please accept this letter as a formal request for the continuance to the next Planning Board hearing before the City of Quincy Planning Board, August 9th, 2017, or September 13th, 2017. Thank you in advance for your consideration of this request. Very truly yours, Robert J. Fleming Jr. So I don't know whether anybody's here for that item, it's being continued to --
Am I a lay member at the temple if I may speak?
Sure. Just identify yourself.
Thank you. My name is Brock Nemeth. I live at 53 Andrews Road off of Fennel Street. I'm a member at the temple and have been since 2002. And just a quick note to explain what the temple is trying to do. At Thousand Buddha Temple, we are seeking to build a research library. Essentially what that is, it would be an academic resources library for visiting monks and academics, PhD-type of research. It's not a public library open to the public that anybody could come and go. It would be just a simple research and study center for the temple to provide to the academic and Buddhist community. At the library, there has been a few questions from the neighborhood. I was at the last information meeting they had over there, and a few people were interested in how large the facility would be. I believe it was about 10,000 feet altogether, but the actual usable space, after you take out the utilities, stairwells, bathrooms, closets, the utility spaces, would be somewhere probably in the area of around 1,300 to 1,500 feet per floor. It's a four-floor proposition. This would be a closed library that people would come to by invitation, not by just walking up and asking to enter the building. It's something that the Sifu, which is what we call our reverend at the temple, Sifu Reverend Kuan Hien, has spent 30 years collecting religious and sacred documents from around the world. This building has religious art, Buddhist sutras, and objects which are of interest to academic researchers. It's not really something the general layperson is very big on looking into. It's more of a specialized category of research. So I would just like to say that I'm in support of the temple. The reverend at the temple, unfortunately, she's not a good English speaker. She speaks almost no English at all, so she does have some trouble getting people to translate for her. But she has expressed to me that if there are issues or situations with the proposal, she's willing to work with the city to find something that everybody will be happy with. She wants to leave the legacy that every citizen in Quincy can be proud of. I came here from a little town called Astoria, Oregon. Back in 1980, I moved down to Quincy when my wife passed in 2002. I needed a quiet, warm, embracing community to come to, and I find Quincy is all of that. They have a vast diversity in this city that is welcoming, and I hope that this idea, this proposal, is something that the city can welcome. I thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd ask for a vote to continue the public hearing, and I just don't know whether it's August 9th, Mr. Director, or September 13th. That would be determined.
Yes, that's the conversation I had with their attorney prior to him coming forth with the request for continuance. So they'll be back to us. We'll find out when they can get their -- the rest of their information to be able to disclose.
All right, so I'd ask for a motion to continue this public hearing to either one of the two dates depending on what meeting day. Is it the second?
Second.
Scott, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that would be on our next agenda. I am going to take an item out of order. We're going to go to the business portion of the agenda. Oh, yeah, well, okay. Yeah, good point. Callahan just reminded me, I have a motion to accept the minutes from the last meeting. Second?
Second.
Scott, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Let me just go get the point info. Albatina Street.
I thank you. If I could offer some fresh spring water to anyone that would like it, there's four bottles here on the windowsill. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Peace, my man. Okay, the request is for approval not required with the two lots that front on Albatina Street and Branch Street. The case is a zoning board of appeals case that approved the allowance of two lots, one of which consists of 4,800 square feet and the other one consists of 5,993 plus and minus square feet. So the Board of Appeals has granted its permission so the board can endorse the plan. These both lots, and more importantly, the ZBA is approved. Yeah, probably easier if everybody just comes up and signs, huh? We'll do the paper cuts. While we're signing, I'd like to introduce Jim Walsh, who's our new principal planner in the department. Welcome aboard. It's first meeting. I'd like to welcome you. Well, if they do, I'll give credit to Jim and supposed to Rob.
First in July.
I'm running on a brush. All these cuts.
That occurs a few times.
That's running in charge.
Charge, like getting double seconded.
Doesn't matter.
It's out of this world.
You want to eat that? I'll just take the rest in my pocket. Thanks.
Okay, we are expecting Mr. Barry, but I'm going to open the public hearing in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Laws Draft of 48, Section 11. The Quincy Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, July 19th, 2017, on or above 7:17, in the first floor Boards and Commissions Room, Quincy City Hall, 1305 Hancock Street, Quincy, Massachusetts. On the application of Quirk Auto Dealerships, Daniel J. Quirk, 444 Quincy Avenue, P.O. Box 850972 MA 02185. With special permits under Quincy Zoning Ordinance Title 17, under Sections 9.4 Special Permits 3.1.3, major non-residential use, 5.1.17 parking waiver, and 5.2.6 loading facilities. On the application of, excuse me, of Quirk Auto Dealership, P.O. Box 850972, Braintree, Mass. 02185. The applicant is proposing to construct a new Quirk Mazda dealership facility at its present location at the corner of McGrath Highway and Brackett Street. Proposal is to demolish the two existing buildings, the Mazda building on the corner of the McGrath Highway and Brackett Street, and the former Yellow Cab building on McGrath Highway. Properties will be combined to create a new 23,994 square foot, two-story automobile dealership facility. Property will be improved with a redesigned parking layout, new pavement, landscaping, lighting, underground utilities, and stormwater management. Parking lot has 142 spaces. Land is within the Business B zoning district. An auto dealership is allowed on this site. A property contains 92,176 plus and minus square feet of land and is located at 91 McGrath Highway and 5th and 5th Brackett Street. The subject property is located in a Business B zoning district and is shown in SSAS Plan 1112, Lot 3, Lot 8.
Mr. Chairman, board members, good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Harrington. My law office is located at 21 McGrath Highway in the city of Quincy, and I represent the Quirk Automobile Group and Daniel J. Quirk, who is the owner of this property. Mr. Chairman, this project is a redevelopment project. There are currently two commercial buildings on this property, a former Yellow Cab building as well as the existing Mazda dealership building. Both of those buildings are going to be torn down, and new buildings will be built to replace both of those buildings, and the entire property will be new. All the facilities, all the utilities, drainage, landscaping, everything on the property will be new. Mr. Quirk owns both of these properties. He's planning on, as I said, combining them into one 92,000 square foot lot with a new 23,000 square foot dealership building. Property is going to be greatly improved over existing conditions with a redesigned parking layout and a parking lot that works properly with aisle widths and parking space sizes as required, all new pavement, landscaping, lighting, underground utilities, and stormwater management. The property will have 142 parking spaces outside the building which do not include any of the spaces inside the building in the showroom or in the service area. It's a two-story commercial building, and will have new driveway entrances on McGrath Highway and Brackett Street. The existing conditions are that there are five curb cuts on McGrath Highway and Brackett Street at the moment. Three of those five curb cuts will be closed, so the property will have one entrance on McGrath Highway and one entrance on Brackett Street. Also, the parking lot lighting, signage, and lighting for this property will significantly improve the appearance of the street and significantly upgrade the aesthetics of McGrath Highway from the existing conditions. This property, the zoning here is Business B. Business B allows a maximum FAR of 1.5. This building is 1/6 the size of the maximum-sized building that could be allowed on this property, so it's definitely not a dense use or an overly large building considering the size of the property. Business B also allows a four-story building, and this building is a two-story building, as you can see from the plans. So dimensionally and from a zoning perspective, this property is significantly less than the maximums that are allowed in our zoning ordinance or significantly greater than the minimums that are required in the zoning ordinance. For example, the building setbacks, minimum building setbacks, 15 feet in Business B. We have setbacks of 87 feet, 63 feet, 81 feet, and 37 feet. We've also got 11,000, more than 11,000 square feet of new green space on the property, which also is not required by Business B zoning. There's no minimum green area space in Business B, and yet we have 11,000 square feet of landscaping. The only dimensional non-conformances on this property relate to the two special permits that we've requested from you, the parking special permit and the loading special permit. And I'll finish my comments with those two issues. This project has already been to the Conservation Commission. It was approved on June 7th of this year, 2017, DEP File Number 0591393. It was approved as a redevelopment project. This property is in the buffer zone of Town Brook. It's within the 200-foot buffer zone under the Rivers Act. It's also within the 100-foot buffer zone of the Wetlands Act. It is grandfathered under both of those acts as a redevelopment of a pre-existing degraded site, and so that project, the project has been approved by the Conservation Commission, submitted to the Mass. DEP, and DEP had no comments on the project prior to the Quincy Conservation Commission approving the project. This project was approved because it's a redevelopment, it's an improvement over existing conditions. If you look in your packages, you'll notice that there's a landscaping plan, a schematic landscaping plan included in there. The project includes restoration of the riverfront area. If you look at the landscaping plan along the riverside of the property, there's a plan there to remove invasive species and to plant native wetland species along that side of the property. This project was also filed with the Board of Appeal. This is a flood zone, and the Board of Appeal voted to issue a floodplain special permit to the project. The first floor of the building is above base flood elevation, and that was really the only significant issue for the Board of Appeal to look at for its floodplain special permit. They also did take a look at the dimensional requirements for this project, and it confirmed that it does comply with the dimensional requirements for the size of the building, the size of the lot, setbacks, parking, and so forth. This property, the two buildings together have a combined footprint of 17,834 feet. The proposed footprint for the new building is 18,786 square feet, which is only a 5% increase over what's there now on the site. Where also, the existing building is 10 feet from the property line on the side of the property, next to the river, next to the Town Brook. The new building will be 37 feet away from that property line. So again, the building is moving further away from the river, and that's an improvement over the existing conditions. We've requested three special permits from you. Special permit for a major non-residential use, which is based on the square footage of the building. A parking special permit. This special permit relates to a couple of dimensional non-conformances of the parking. The city zoning ordinance says that parking spaces have to be set back 10 feet from the street line, 10 feet from a property line, and 10 feet from a building. So it's basically 10 feet, 10 feet, 10 feet. In the back corner of this property, our parking spaces here are 9.5 feet from the property line, so it's out of compliance by half a foot. So our setback here is 9.5 feet, and these parking spaces that are along this side of the building and along the back and also along this side of the building are less than 10 feet from the building. So the parking special permit that we're asking for is for those parking spaces that are less than 10 feet from the building and also that corner in the back where the setback is 9.5 feet from the property line. We're not requesting a parking waiver because we don't have enough parking spaces. We do. We have more than enough parking spaces for the use and for the size of the building. If you look at your dimensional table that's included in your package, there's 120 parking spaces required in Business B for a building of this size, and we have 142 parking spaces. So the parking waiver is not because we don't have enough parking. Also, the parking spaces are all 9 by 18, and all the aisles, driveway aisles within the parking lot are at least 24 feet wide. So the parking does require really with everything that matters in terms of dimensional requirements for parking. And we have a similar situation with the loading. That's to the same special permit, basically a waiver, the loading requirements. We do have enough loading bays. We should have two loading bays according to the city's ordinance, and we have five exterior loading doors that serve this building. On this project, we have a loading door here, 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 and we have two loading doors here. Cars that come in for service come into the building at this point, and there are overhead doors here and here. So we have five entrances into the building for loading, but what we don't have is, our ordinance says that a loading bay is 10 feet wide, 40 feet long, and 14 feet high. None of those doors are 14 feet high. They could be redone and made 14 feet high, but there's really no reason because this building is designed specifically to be an automobile dealership, and the doors are big enough in order for the vehicles to get in and out of the building for service. So we're requesting the loading waiver because those doors aren't 14 feet high. And just for your own information, this area right here where the cars come in where they check in for service, if the use of this building changed to some other use in the future, this area right here is 10 feet wide, more than 40 feet long, and all they would have to do is retrofit these doors to be 14 feet high, and this area right here would satisfy the two loading dock requirements for the building if it was to be used for something else in the future. With me this evening is Jim Burke. He's our civil engineer. He designed the site, and he did all the work with the catch basins and the infiltrators and all the stormwater management, which you would expect from him, and also Ahmet Chu, who's the architect on this project. So first I'd like to ask Jim Burke to come up and talk about the work that he's done.
Can I just do one thing, in fact, and for the record, the roll call. Member Barry, now President. Apology for being late.
Jim Burke with DeSalle Burke &amp; Associates, and I'll be short. Chris talked long enough, evidently, but you know--
It's the only thing on the agenda. I'm making a little while, I'm being a little careful.
You know, still want to control this particular site was fairly easy. In fact, we could actually, I could stand up and say literally we wouldn't have to put anything in because we reduced the amount of impurience area on the lot. Basically, the existing conditions, all this green space really doesn't exist, but you know, we considered that possibility, and we felt that stormwater control of this particular location is a good idea. You can clean the water. You can clean the water fairly easily by putting in the catch basins in the corners. We're recharging in these locations here with the Caltech systems. We did some soil testing. We actually did structural soil testing through HML. HML found some good gravel underneath, actually in front. There's all good gravel up front. There's a little bit of removal replaced out of the back end, and we found some of that. It was witnessed by Quincy DPW. But stuff below it's good gravel, so we're going to do removal and replace with the sand. So the stormwater design meets DEP's stormwater management standards for new construction, this is redevelopment. So we're happy with that. We had the correct separation of groundwater as well for those systems. We're bringing in new water. And there's two sewer connections going out to Brackett, one for the, through the oil water separator for the service airy drains and as well as obviously for regular domestic storage as well. We have, we did generate an overhead lighting plan. The intensity plan might be in your pack that I got, but I assume a little bit late, and I have it right here. But it was prepared by Beacon. Mr. Quirk uses this guy a lot. He uses those, I forget the name of the lighting, but it's the low-energy with the dark stack of light, lighting. And we have less than a foot candle at the rear property line towards the river as well as towards the old WJDA building. It's a little water. Obviously, we have a fire protection pipe as well. And as Chris stated earlier too, we are in a floodplain that's likely to cause a storm flowage, so there's no compensatory storage. We were able to just lift the site up a foot and a half to get the building outside the floodplain, and that was the flood for the building. Have any other questions? I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Artichu is here tonight to explain the building.
Good evening, Artichu, the architect for the project. So footprint of the building is 1800, 827 square feet. And the second level is actually mezzanine, which is 5100 square feet. On the first floor is the showroom, the service area, the reception, the service department, and the parts section. On the second floor are the offices and the break rooms and the, an upper area for the parts section. The total height of the building is only 28 feet. And the exterior of the building is of composite aluminum panels, approved by Mazda. And in a silver and a black, multi, the glasses are coated clear, glass with an anodized aluminum frame, very modern one. And the main entrance is spaced around highway. If you have any questions?
Just, um, the existing Yellow Cab building, how high, if compared to how high, is building going to be? What's the differential, 5 feet, 10 feet?
I'd say that taxi building's probably about 20 feet, so 8 feet. A little 8 feet higher.
So this is less than a three-family house.
Thank you. And who's talking about landscaping?
The landscape plan is...
I got it in front of me, guys.
The landscape plan was prepared by Mark Copchell, N.C.A. And really, the bashing orders were really to kind of, not to stress up the front and this area, but really to kind of take care of this. So the bank for Town Brook is going to be essentially all the bases removed and naturalized with the plantings specified by Mr. Copchell. And we make sure that they're salt-tolerant and they work in that flood zone. So that was one of the major reasons Conservation really kind of loved the project. And it's been a big item with the others as well.
The only follow-up, I'm trying to visualize what it's going to look like when I'm driving down that corridor, headed towards Southern Autery, what those street trees are going to look like. Obviously, you've got to show off the merchandise, so I can imagine that they're not going to be blocking the cars that are in the driveway. But I see that there's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 6 of, you know, abutting McGrath Highway. So what are they going to look like?
You know, my guess is that the canopies will be high so that the cars are visible to people who are walking by or driving by on the street.
You know, you got, you doing the sidewalk?
Um, yes.
Could be raining sidewalk?
I think the sidewalk, the sidewalk on...
I think the sidewalk's...
Thomas, the current parkway is in pretty good shape. And you make the turn to, on Elm Street, is where it's going to kind of be improved and then for the long Brackett, Brackett Street, Brackett Street's a little out.
Thank you.
My only question is traffic visibility of those streets. 11 feet, the traffic visibility coming out of Brackett? Want to get on to McGrath?
Uh, you know, knowing Debbie Finnegan, no. But you do have any sort of specification on height? We certainly, the freeze certainly could be trimmed to like 6 feet and above. Make sure that the canopy is no, less than 6 feet below or 5 feet below. You, car would do at least like 3 and 1/2 to 4 and 1/2 feet depending on the driving zone. Certainly can make sure that that's the case.
And these are regular street trees that tip off of this.
We could certainly, you know, get some more of the specification if that's a new issue, you know.
Yeah, I could, I would appreciate it. Well, I can just raise the point, Jim. Just for the consideration of the board. I consider that this project is not going to generate pedestrian traffic. If it was any other project, I'd say that that's one of the most dangerous crossing areas in the city. I drive that to drop my girls off at school every morning. People, they don't use the crosswalk. But I just want to make sure the board agree with me that I don't think of any reason to think about pedestrianation. Because I don't think anybody would cross the street to come to this property. But if it was any other use, I'd be a little bit concerned.
Any other questions from the board? You want to say?
Yeah, one final point while I'm thinking of it, just want to make sure I don't forget. Earlier, you were discussing whether or not you were planning on meeting in August and what date that would be. If our preference, if you could meet in August, that would be our first choice to try to get this project approved if the peer review was complete by then and Mr. Quirk wants to start tearing down the buildings and building the project as soon as, right after Labor Day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrington. Okay, this is a public hearing. Ask anybody that wishes to speak to come forward, identify themselves. And if people don't want to come up and speak, there are sheets on the window casing which they can sign in or sign for. Anybody wishing to speak? Come forward.
Hi, George. I just wanted to say that we've, Jeff Hines, 197 Elm Street. And Quincy's Neighborhood Association fully supports this project. I can't say enough about Mr. Quirk. If other businesses in the neighborhood were as good as him, it'd be a better neighborhood. So I just wanted to say we fully support his concern, his business. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Anyone else wishing to speak or sign?
I just have one question. John Motterfield, 62 Brown Wall Road. There's 140 parking spaces, is what you said?
142.
142. Will any of those spaces be used for cars that you're going to be selling?
Yes.
So public parking or for employees? Is there a breakup of how many spaces? I mean, so there'll be enough spaces for the employees and whatever for the lot. But I just think it's kind of the spaces that they're kind of using to sell cars. I'm not sure if they technically are part of the parking requirement. It's kind of a gray area, but that was just my point.
Anyone else wishing to speak or being quick? Counselor?
Good evening, everybody. Margaret LaForest, 236 Rock Island Road. Great to have a mic here. This is plainboard upgrade, good job. So I had a neighborhood meeting on this last month, and in, we used the WJDA building. It's great to have it on the site. I think some of the points we heard is the aesthetic improvements this is going to make to the neighborhood, the stormwater upgrade for an existing heavily blacktop site that's running directly into the Brook is now being treated on site. I will say, Mr. Burke, great job on the stormwater management plan. It's way above and beyond what is required. The other thing we really appreciated for the neighborhood is the landscaping plan. He'll be eradicating all of the invasive species, the pragmatis that runs along the Brook, and planting native species. So above and beyond again with what was required versus what he will be doing on site. I will say it's important to recognize Mr. Quirk's corporate citizenship in what he does for the neighborhood. This is a blighted property. Just to have the tower taken down alone on the top of Yellow Cab is a major game changer for this neighborhood. Some of the areas in, Colleen referenced, the pedestrian issues, those are definite, significant issues in the neighborhood, and particularly because of the use of the Yellow Cab site and how many curb cuts were there and the way that they would literally drive out of the Yellow Cab site over the crosswalk with like the handicap ramp they were using it as a driveway egress point. So they're tightening that up. They've really done a lot, whether it's physically with the site and the commercial investment in the community. I mean, look at the corridor of Southern Autery. We used to have the old Soft and Chop gas station. Remember when it just had the 18-wheelers covered in graffiti? You know, they really have changed things. Mr. Quirk spent over a million dollars branding the Ford dealership along the Autery. A lot has been changed. You talk about downtown. This is a project right in the gateway, in periphery of downtown. It's really important to the neighborhood and I think sets the tone. He's done a great job, substantial commercial investment, aesthetic improvement, and general support of the neighborhood. He really has checked all the boxes of all the questions that we asked. So we just want to appreciate that his team has really reached out to us from the get-go, reached and worked with the neighborhood. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else wishing to speak?
One final point. Mr. Quirk met with the neighbors, actually this afternoon, at the site, and he made a commitment to them that if there was some improvements that could be made to the signage on that crosswalk that's right there that goes across to the YMCA, that he would do that, he would pay for that. He committed to the neighbors that he would talk to the city, see if something could be done. He didn't commit to put in a traffic light, but he did say that he would, you know, work to improve the signage on that crosswalk if possible.
Thank you. Okay, we're still waiting additional information. Either Mr. Baptist or Mr. Walsh want to speak to that?
We're currently, we still have some peer review work to be done on this. It's a substantially large project. We wanted you to get a chance to hear it tonight. Again, it's become our fashion here to give this and any other large project that comes before the board at least two meetings so that we can digest and you folks can actually see the response from peer review as well. So it would be comfortable saying that whether our meeting is in August or September, we probably have everything all tied up at that point.
Okay, I entertain a motion to continue. Let's to state uncertain whether it be August or September. Is a motion to continue? Second?
Second.
Discussion, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't have anything else on the agenda. So I entertain a motion to adjourn. So we need it. Thank you all. And if you will let us know whether we're meeting on August. Oh, yeah, it's been a...